All right, let's go ahead. All right, all thanks for coming and apologies for being late, but we'll go ahead and get started. So, we'll start the meeting with a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Do we have any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda? Dan?
I have none.
None?
None.
None there? Nothing, Tim? All right, so let's move with the approval of the agenda as written.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We've got a motion and second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, consent agenda. Anything on the consent agenda that you would like to discuss?
Make a motion, approve the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
A motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda is approved.
We had Mr. Seminton's presentation already.
Okay, Seminton's presentation has been provided already. Mayor is not here, so no mayor's report, no cards for the public forum. And we have no public hearings, so we'll quickly move into the committee report, the EMS committee.
So, the EMS committee met, and they had a number of items that came up for discussion at their last meeting. Included in those were two relatively large topics in many cities, leash laws and also the Cassin rental housing ordinances. So, those are included in your packets for review. Obviously, as you know, the EMS committee has got resident members, citizen members, and some of those citizen members had questions, especially with the dogs-at-large policy that the city has. So, they asked that the city council review this item. My suggestion would be that if there's any feedback tonight, I can bring that to them. Otherwise, what I would do is I'd bring these items back to the EMS committee at their next meeting. But they thought that both of those sections of the code might be improved, especially if you look at the code section on leash laws. They felt there was some unclear language in terms of controlling the dog. The "at-large" is the question there, so if you look at that, I think it's the fourth item down. Off the premises of the owner and not under control of the owner or other competent person by leash not extending eight feet in length. They felt that that might be clarified to be a little bit stronger, that people need to have the dog on the leash. Because what they found, one of the citizen members had her dog, she was out walking her dog, her dog was attacked by another dog, that someone was there with the dog, but, and they were within, you know, a short distance with the dog, still kind of went after the other dog. And so, they wanted some clarification on that. So, I told them, you know, it's an issue, of course, in every community where there's dogs that get out. But I think that that could be clarified relatively simply, that part of the code, which then could be used to cite folks who don't maintain that. Now, obviously, there are a lot of people in town who feel that their dogs well behaved and well maintained. And I know myself, walking in town with my wife and our daughter, you know, at times you do see dogs that are in people's yards, and typically, they're very well trained, but you do run into those occasions. So, certainly looking for any feedback that the council might have on that issue.
One of the other questions that was brought up was, when you call the police department, what's the process for if a dog's loose? Where do we take it? Can we take it somewhere? Some of those questions were asked. Impoundment, when you do, when we do have a dog that is loose and trying to find its owner?
Well, in the past, part of that, and I know the police aren't here, but we've had that issue in the past with the dogs at-large, at loose, that were, nobody claimed them. And the reason the police department and the city stopped impound, or putting up, was the cost. Because nobody was covering it, the vet, no vet nearby will take them, so then you had to go to another town. So, it got to be a really, really overly bearing cost, and it just, the city couldn't justify it for, so that was a big issue.
And the build on that, those that were unclaimed ended up being euthanized, which was an additional cost.
And then, and that went back on the city. And it just got to be, so that's a hard one to figure out, and that was how it got changed then before years passed. But I don't know if that's the right answer or the wrong answer, but there is definitely something we can look at, but...
Well, I mean, part of the issue we talked about too at the meeting was that even just capturing the dogs themselves. You know, our police officers are not necessarily trained to be animal control officers.
Right.
So, that in and of itself is an issue. We did, you know, talk about, well, is it, would it be possible for them to temporarily hold an animal, you know, at city, you know, at the, you know, if they got some kennels or something like that? But you run into that issue where, you know, all of a sudden, someone doesn't come and get it, then, you know, we're feeding it or we're taking it somewhere else, so...
Or you get the liability of the officer trying to handle it or kennel it.
Right, and looking at 90.11, letter A, annual subject to impoundment, it says that they may assist an impounding dog. May, I imply that may is a choice, correct? So, they don't have to, but they can? Is that how I read the word "may" correctly? So, you can call, but they don't, we don't always go out, we may if we need to, but we may also not. So, it's up to the officer.
I think that was added for that reason.
Yep.
Yeah, and that, you know, I've seen in the past, they've called, if the dog is, or the animal, we should say, because it's not necessarily a dog, but if it has a tag, they try to locate the owner, but without that, it's, there's no local...
Well, and that brought up another issue, I don't know if you were going to go there, Ryan?
Yeah, because we talked...
But the issue with licensing.
Licensing, because it seems like it's a hard thing to get people to license their dogs with the city. I know we have that program with the QR code type on the neck. I'd like to see, do us something where maybe we give a discount if you do sign up at a certain time, like do once a year where, hey, if you come, register your dog, it's this price instead of the normal forty dollars or whatever it is, because it's a lifetime fee. So, it's not a huge cost, but it might promote people to come register their dog that haven't, like myself.
Well, on the flip side of that would be, do we step up enforcement on issues with dogs then?
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
How? I mean, what kind of manpower?
You know, our officers go out and they get a complaint that somebody has four dogs in their house, which they're not supposed to. I'm not saying we do this, but I mean, that, you know, it's the carrot or it's the stick of, you know. And I guess if the council doesn't want to take any action in this way, maybe the easy thing would be to take a look at this leash law. Because I think that was, that was what the EMS first and foremost discussed was, we've got dogs that are at-large, they do belong to somebody, they are going to get picked up by somebody, but they're not being controlled properly. And so, maybe beefing up that language itself would be enough to solve this issue a little bit. Because I will say, Cassin is a very nice, clean community. I don't see a lot of dogs over there. You know, other towns I've served in were nice communities as well, but while cats were a huge issue, you know, Oakland blew it, they just picked up some feral hogs, so, you know, somebody called the DNR on those, and then dogs as well. And it's really not good for the dogs either, because the inbreeding and the different stuff that causes problems long-term and disease. So, you know, I think we want to avoid getting down that road.
If people are calling with concerns and it's, when we, I think of the rules and statutes that we have for other things, like we've talked about at EMS, about people parking overnight or parking a trailer. Like, if someone complains about it or has a concern about it and brings it to the police department, they're going to solve it. But us going out actively trying to enforce every rule that we have or ordinance, it's not doable. So, if you have a concern, call, it says "may," so they may come help or they may say, I'm sorry, we're not, this is not something we can handle right now.
So, with that, like I said, my suggestion would be, I'll have this ordinance, this part of the ordinance ready for the EMS, so they can take a look at that line, especially relating to the dogs on the leashes. And then they can discuss it more, and if there's some feedback from them, we can bring it back to council.
And can you see what some of the other local cities are doing for leash?
Well, I will tell you that most of them have similar language, in terms of what they do with impounded dogs. Most of them right now, like Pine Island is where they're taking a lot of them, like, you know, Manorville takes them, Dodge Center, I'm not sure where they take theirs, they don't seem to have any dogs to get off the leash, so there's something going on over there, but...
Manorville might also have, I think they have kennels in their shop. So, if they, if you, if they get an animal by a Friday, they might put it in there for the weekend before they can take it to Pine Island, because they can't always get it there at a certain time. So, they do have some kennels there with food already pre there, water and whatnot, so they occasionally might store one there. They, we went through that in Manorville years ago when I was on council there, trying to figure out where to put dogs, because there's nowhere to put them, once you have them.
Is there an option that if dogs are impounded, that some agreement or process could be worked out with pause and clause?
Well, we can certainly take a look at it. I will say that most of those aren't going to have, they're not going to have zero cost. I mean, there's going to be some cost, because obviously, the organization has to have, you know, funds to pay for things.
Well...
We could certainly contact them and take a look at it.
Because if they do like any other, all the animals, if you want to bring them to them, you have to run them through a series of shots and somebody's got to pay for it, and they're not gonna. They're going to charge whoever brings it.
Yeah.
Or you can sure check into it.
Call them, and, you know, best case scenario, we have an agreement with them that we don't ever have to use. That'd be ideal. It'd just be in case there was one or two a year that we had some issue with, that would be a minimal cost, even if we did have to vaccinate them, you know.
Because I had heard from a couple of people in the last two, three months that they had seen a dog, and it was friendly, and the police come in, they're like, they're like, why are you not taking them? They're like, where? To, and it's not in, and that's kind of where this started streaming from, I think. And part of the leash law one was, is people are out jogging and mornin', and the dogs are attacking. And they know it's somebody's dog, because it's got a collar and...
Right.
The second item we had was F-1B, their rental housing, and so this is the fair housing, rental housing ordinance, which the city has got in place. There were questions from some of the members of EMS about what the enforcement looks like and what the inspection process looks like. And that led to a much longer discussion about if we did start to enforce some of these code components, what do you do with folks who are in these substandard residences? And, you know, how does that become, that may become a greater issue of, once it's being enforced, you know, landlords may choose to, you know, close their properties for a time period to handle it. And then how do you deal with the issue of VRBOs and short-term rentals and rentals in homes and things like that nature too? So, anyways, I just wanted you to be aware of that, and, you know, obviously, Ryan was at the meeting, so he can talk about it a little bit more detail too. But I think that was really kind of what the gist of it was.
Trying to make sure that the fire department, one aspect is having them come in and check to make sure are there enough fire extinguishers? Are there fire alarms up to color? Are things done properly, so if there is a problem, can they help solve it quickly? Do the people that live there have a way to maintain their living? And then to get the fire department to see some of those buildings that they haven't seen before, haven't seen in a while, so they know how to get it, when they have to go into them, what it looks like, so they're ready to help support those people.
Yeah, I mean, when I look at it, you know, you look at 96.03 under enforcement, you know, typically, as in most cases, the city acts as investigations upon complaints or clear violations. So, typically in the past, you know, whether it's lawn grass or dogs at large, you know, we're responding to a complaint. And the same thing would be here, you know, since I've been here, I haven't received a single call from anybody who was renting an apartment that their residence wasn't safe or something like that, because if we had, we would have referred it to the police or we would have referred it to, you know, building inspector or something like that. So, it's kind of a reactionary thing. The question is, when do we go in? You know, we talked about the registration certificate required, like when that building turns over, when it has a new owner? Do you say, okay, yep, this is the time when the fire chief will go in and he'll make a bigger inspection? Or does it turn over every time we have a new tenant? That seems like it would be probably much more frequently, probably not as feasible. But my thought would be to make it so that when the building is sold, for sure, that it would go and be inspected at that time. But, I mean, obviously...
You could even, something might not get sold for twenty years. You could even do a, once a year, once, every two-year, potentially, you know, kind of get a rotation.
Sure.
Not do every one, every year, but like, kind of do a section, do a section, you know.
Yeah, I mean, so you're talking primarily about the apartment complexes, which we can get, you know, we have a list, we know the commercial accounts via the utilities. What about your in-home rentals and that sort of thing?
I don't know how you would do those.
Well, I mean, we can get a list of properties that are homesteaded and properties that are not homesteaded. And you can, you know, it's going to be a substantial commitment of man-hours to research all those properties that are not homesteaded to see if they're rentals or if they're just something else. I think one thing that came from EMS was the concern that some of the institutional facilities, so some of the care homes, the homes for disabled folks or something like that are not being maybe looked at. They may have been set up as a single-family home, but they maybe have multiple groups of people, and that, that might require some additional inspections as well, but...
Wouldn't they be registered then, if they?
Um, not to my knowledge.
I mean, if you're caretaker, don't...
Maybe registered with the state of Minnesota, but not necessarily...
I think if they're registered with the state of Minnesota, they'd have to follow guidelines and the state would be investigating.
Once again, these are our concerns the EMS brought up, I don't really know the...
I don't know, I'm just asking, that's why.
I assume if there's no complaints, would they be checking?
Well, but if, if it's just like a daycare, they inspect those yearly, whether there's a complaint or not. If there's a complaint, there's really more, but if it was a licensed caretake facilities, it would be registered with the state, it would be investigated under state, it wouldn't even be our jurisdiction, and it would be, I think I could be wrong.
That's a, that's a good, that's a good thought, you know, and certainly, that's something that would be interesting to get a list of those facilities and know too, so...
Sure.
Any other thoughts on this issue? Otherwise, like I said, I'll bring these back to the EMS committee, they can take a look at the code, see if there's any recommended languages or tweaks they'd like to make, and then we'll bring that back to council as old business.
I just know I just have in deja vu, because these are both topics that we discussed twenty years ago.
Yep.
It's why you're in the chair today.
It's pretty common.
Yeah. All right, thank you. Moving on to old business, discussion on Sunday liquor.
All right, let's see here. So, this was something the council brought up at their last meeting, and they asked us to put on the agenda for tonight's meeting. It was in relation to a request from the Legion for a early morning Sunday liquor licensing. Currently, they're licensed, I think, at eleven o'clock or twelve o'clock on Sundays to begin serving. And the mayor had requested, we put that back on the agenda. So, it's on the agenda for discussion. Would you like to take a look at a change to that terminology or not?
We've, in the years past, we've only had one request, I know, and that was this year to do. So, I don't know if it's something that we really need to be changing right now, just for one request, but it's, I guess if you do do it, it still comes back to the council, or if we change it, does it just automatically become? I don't know, I mean...
Well, we would have a public hearing on it, this ordinance, so there'd be a public hearing, it'd be notification for it. I mean, the only instance I can see where it would be, something would be similar to what happened this year, where you had a football game and it was early morning, and, I mean, I don't foresee a lot of events that would have that, but it certainly is up to the council.
Because I did see there was a couple of other towns nearby in the southeast that did have game going at eight in the morning, but...
They, they're doing, they do benefits occasionally, maybe they want to have a mornings benefit where they have Bloody Marys or they have other types of alcohol that can serve in the morning on a Sunday. Might just be best to have something like that in place, so we don't have to deal with it later on, and then we have to say to the community, no, you can't, you can't do this, because we just didn't want to do it for the one time. Now, it became more than one time. If it's changed for good, then we don't have to deal with it anymore and give that business an opportunity, or other businesses that serve alcohol that opportunity.
Yeah, and I mean, and part of it is to a certain societal change too. I mean, when I was growing up, we didn't have baseball games on Sunday morning, we didn't have basketball games. You know, anybody who's got kids in school now knows that they're very calm and they're driving. I mean, it was kind of a, either you went to church or you slept in, and now it's, it's more common to see those kind of things, so I don't know.
What, what would your, was the police chief thinking for enforcement? Is it going to affect him much if there's...
You know, it didn't sound like, from what his perspective was, that there would be a lot of, I mean...
I mean, we've only had one demand so far.
Yeah, I mean, you're right, so it's new anyways, so really, we don't know. But if there was an issue, they're going to respond, our police department staffed.
Sure.
Whether there's an event going on or not, so...
Dan brings up a good point. I'm not inclined to make policy change based on a one-off, but if this is something that we can anticipate down the road, and it requires, you know, taking another look, you know, I'm open to it.
Because all you need is a certain timeline to have a meeting and a public hearing to do it, you know. So, I mean, they would know in advance if there's a game at eight in the morn, you know.
The council's inclined towards looking at this seriously. My suggestion would be to have a public hearing and take the feedback at that time from the public, if there is any, and to choose then to make a change or not. I wouldn't link it to an event that may or may not happen.
Okay.
I mean, the Vikings might have a Sunday morning game again next year, or something else might be going on, or there might be a morning breakfast benefit. I know the Legion's gotten much more active over the last three years with, you know, their events, so, you know, it's up to the council really, based on the feedback of the residents. So, that would be my suggestion, and what we can do is we can get that set up, so that at a meeting, you know, future meeting this fall, we can have a public hearing, and at that point, the council can make a choice.
We can anticipate some resistance from our religious institutions that we have in town.
Yeah.
All right.
So, if that's the direction you'd like us to take, then I'll talk to staff and we'll get some language changed. It won't be a huge change, it's really more of changing it from eleven to eight AM. I mean, I guess that would be, what I'd be inclined to is if we have draft language, it's probably eight AM. I don't know that it makes sense to do it a lot earlier than that, but that's up to, you know, the council.
Do you, being there's only three of us, do you want input from the other two before you go that far?
Part of the reason, I think if we, if we, if we have another, if we have a public hearing, I think that's when I can get input from everybody. I mean, if, if the mayor and council member Ferris are not interested in it, then they're going to vote no on it, or they're going to...
Okay, I just care, it just...
All right, thank you.
You bet.
New business, energy audit and efficiencies.
Perfect, and I'm glad that Nancy is here. This is a project she's been putting a lot of time into over the last couple of years, and she's been working very closely with Margit at Frontier Energy, which is one of our partners. So, I've been seeing these energy audit reports, and what we're doing is, and what we're looking at doing is, we're looking at doing some facility envelope improvements to a number of our city facilities over the next, basically, year and a half, I think is kind of our timeline, Nancy, isn't it? And some of them will probably come first, we're looking at the ice arena first, that's one of the ones that seems to have some of the most inefficient energy usage. The ice arena and the liquor store are probably the big two. And then after that, you know, we'll probably kind of work through as budgets allow. One thing that we do is we do have some of these what they call SIP dollars. So, every year, the city has a budget for its electric utility, and a portion of that budget for electric utility is required to go to energy, renewable, kind of, so that's where we provide rebates for energy-efficient appliances and things like that. And at the end of this year, I think Nancy had anticipated there would be some budget left over, that's right. And so, we're looking at using some of that to try and push towards a little bit more energy-efficient buildings, as well as stepping up our replacement of the street lighting. So, we have a big chunk of town that's already gone to LED, we're going to continue to do that as the budget allows. So, I just want to share these with you, and then Nancy, have you had any comments on it at all?
No, I mean, you've got all the details, so energy and, Frontier Energy has put a lot of work into it, but they're going to prepare a, more like a summary schedule of the different projects that can be available for each building. The payback, you know, what it costs, the payback and the energy savings, because we always need the energy savings to report. So, I think it'll be real easy to be able to pick and choose, as well as to look forward into what you might look at in the years to come too. So, it's going to be a good summary report when it comes.
And like I said, I really do appreciate Nancy's work for a long time with Margit on this, and she's done a good job on that, so... Just wanted to bring it to your attention that we're looking at it, so...
Okay, super. All right, tennis courts.
The most important item of the night, obviously. So, included in your package, you have a couple of different items. This is a project that I've been, I'll be honest, I've been pushing for a little bit, maybe not the, coming so much from the parking and rec department as much as it's coming from me, because I do think that in a town like Cassin, not having any tennis courts is kind of a, is kind of a shame, really. We have a, we have a very nice community, but, so, earlier this year, and I know I emailed this out to you, Ryan, and I know that Parking Rec is going to be taking a look at it, but I wanted to bring it to the council first to just let you know, there are a couple of different options. The most efficient option to us looks like putting in a surface, like a sports surface. And our city attorney, or city engineer, rather, was willing to share with me that in West Concord, they did install a sports surface. So, I reached out to a couple of different companies, looking at what this would look like. Myself, I actually saw this in person when I was down in Story City, Iowa, not too long ago, about a month ago. They had installed this, it's, in essence, it's interlocking tiles, and you may have seen this before if you've been up at the state tournament or something like that. And in Story City, the, in twenty, two thousand and seven, they installed this. I looked at it, you know, in August of this year, I thought it was a lot newer than that. I mean, it looked really, really good. I got ahold of their, their public works department and talked to their city manager down there, and they said it's been really good for them. And what it means is that we can reuse that surface that's currently there, with some improvements, we'd be able to patch it and paint it. And then, we're looking at a much more, in my opinion, cost-effective solution than tearing it all out. Including your, your package, you've got a couple of those different options, and some of them are more expensive, some of them are less expensive. Obviously, if we do the project ourselves, if we just order the tiles and we install them ourselves, it's going to be, you know, it's going to cost less. But if you look at that H2 dot three, that's kind of a complete quote from sport courts, and it would be, you know, kind of the most expensive. They'd be looking at about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to do all the work. They'd be doing all the work, and it would include site work to repair the cracks and apply a black surface coating. And then, we would have two-color quote, so it would probably be either blue and green or blue and red, which is standard tennis colors. And then there would be painted lines for both tennis, and then we would have four pickleball courts on those, so one on each of the halves of the court. And then you could see the installation fees and freight. So, obviously, some of these things we might be able to do ourselves, some of the repair work, some of that sort of thing, which could reduce the cost. But I wanted to bring this to you, just so you know, this is kind of what I'm looking at, it's about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, which I think would be substantially cheaper than installing new courts as a whole. And we use, allow us to use the current fencing we have as well. Working with the electric department, we would probably replace the lights, but that's something, once again, we could, we might even go look at our SIP money for that, because it'll be much more energy-efficient now, so... So, anyways, if there's any feedback tonight, I appreciate that, otherwise, I will bring it to Parking Rec at their next meeting, so...
Well, I was just looking at, you know, their installation fee. The, I think, my opinion, we'd be better off having them do it, because they'll cover with their warranty. Plus, our manpower can be better used to do other things that need to be done in the city. I mean, it's six thousand dollars, you start tying them guys up, they're going to be slower, no offense to them, because they've never done it, and they could come across things they don't know how to do, and then it's delaying the project, so...
And manpower really is an issue. A good case in point would be, this, the rest of this week and early next week, they're working in the cemetery. The entire public work staff is working at feathering gravel on the sides of the cemetery, whishest pavement. So, much more involved than probably they would have realized, they're going to be spending literally hundreds of man-hours to finish that. So, I don't think you're, I think you're right probably in this way, because I do think getting it professionally done, that was the one comment I got from the public works director in Story City, was that they, like, at once every five years, they have the company come and tweak it. So, if something shifts because of water, or it's a wet area that the park is in that uses it, they come and have them adjust it a little bit. That's really all they've seen as an issue. They don't even have it, it's not even like, you know, nailed down or anything like that, it just sits on top and it hasn't been a problem for them, so... Any other feedback?
I think it's a great idea, it's much more cost-effective than building a new one. What did we say, it was eighty to a hundred thousand dollars for one court to build a new one?
I think that's probably a minimum.
Minimum cost, and the repurposing, we already have the fence, I like that portion, and it was nice to have those as a kid. The courts were nice when I was a kid, you could go out there and play tennis, and they were used. And I think they would definitely get used as a pickleball court.
I mean, we looked at a six-court complex and it was about a million dollars.
If, if you don't do something like this on top of that, you have to remove it within, within the near future, because of the safety hazards. That's getting, you know...
It repurposes that space, reuses it to where it was, and then we keep people coming to the parks, so that's a win-win. And the cost seems much better than when we had anticipated building a new one.
And we had looked at potentially doing something larger, but it just seemed without more involvement from the school, it didn't make financial sense. You know, the school doesn't have a tennis program currently. You know, if they were going to do that, to take that step, I think we would collaborate with Mark and with the school to do a bigger complex, probably closer to the school's property, because they do have land to put it on. I mean, this is a tight area, Veterans Park too, so...
Unlimited parking after, you know, so...
Yeah, I've, I've aged out of playing tennis, but I was disciplined, have been disciplined for years, because I, you know, I enjoyed playing tennis way back then.
You can't age out of tennis, come on.
You just go a little slower.
Believe me, yeah, no, I'm not so sure about that even.
Well, so what I'll do is, this will be in their packet next on the eighteenth, and then I'm going to bring it back on the twenty-sixth, because I do need to let the company know whether we're going to be pursuing it, and it actually would probably be next spring at this point. Because, but they have to order materials, supply chain issues, plastic, rubber, it's all on a, it's on a truck coming from China somewhere probably, so...
Yeah, we'll just have to look at it in the context of the budget.
Sure, and there are some options for that too, absolutely.
But I would think your budget of removal is going to be quite higher than you think versus...
All right, well, thank you very much.
Good. All right, administrator's report.
So, I've got just a few things...
So I've got just a few things. I've already highlighted a number of these items, uh, tennis court replacement, historic school. We, we've been meeting with the developer a little bit there. There are some, um, definite, some shortfalls there that they need to fill, and I'm, I'm not confident that that'll be able to be done in the short term. Um, I did email out those new job descriptions that were requested at the last council meeting, so we do have a lot of postings. Right now, we have a library director, um, Nancy's job is also, I mean, I think Nancy might just, you know, decide to unretire, but I'm, I'm not sure. But, but her job is currently posted. We'll see who we get.
She's not an excellent candidate.
Uh, Ron, and, uh, the Parks Streets position has been posted, as well as the Aquatics Center manager and our wastewater lead. Uh, that wastewater lead position's kind of in flux. We may be looking at kind of, uh, filling, um, our supervisor's position, because he's actually scheduled to retire relatively soon too. I met with the library boy last night, and they've also met with Selco, so they're feeling pretty confident about where they're at. Uh, I don't necessarily agree a hundred percent with their approach that they're taking to it, but it certainly is their prerogative. Uh, I want to let you know Congressman Finstad is listening to her, is scheduled to be here tomorrow. Um, had a good meeting with the Chamber of Commerce today, and we'll have some good representation. Uh, some folks from Manorville will be here, Dodge Center, Byron, and then, uh, hopefully we'll get as many people as we can from Casson. We are going to be presenting, um, the city engineer's going to be presenting, and doing a great job, I'm sure. Our water retention project, um, previously Congressman Hagador wasn't as interested in doing the earmark process, which is where they designate some money towards it. Um, Congressman Finstad's indicated a little bit more openness to that, so, uh, we could certainly ask. And, and he'll, he's very interested in hearing more about Casson, so we're looking forward to that. Um, as well as the Medicare reimbursement rates for the Dodge County ambulance. So, uh, I wasn't able to attend the assembly meeting, but, uh, Dan and Ian were there, and they did a good job representing us, and they talked a lot about, uh, issues that fire departments are having with recruitment. So Mayor and McKern and I, I met with some folks from Dodge Center to talk about possibly doing some collective purchasing. Um, it seems counterintuitive that we have four departments within a five-mile radius, and they all need to have a ladder truck. They all have to have, you know, seven hundred, eight hundred thousand dollar pieces of equipment. It doesn't necessarily make as much sense. So at this point in time, the cities are still making it work. Over the next ten years, as that equipment becomes even more expensive, we may be looking at some, some changes there, so.
And they're kind of, as much as they don't like to say it, they're doing, excuse me, they're doing the same thing like ambulances are. They're looking at districts.
Right.
It's becoming more cost-effective, more finding the, because it's easier to get the manpower in a district versus a city. And they're changing their, uh, amount of time to get to a fire hall to, to allow more people that are living closer to come. So there's a lot more to it, but it's.
Yeah, it's definitely something a lot of people are paying attention to right now.
Is one of the deterrents for people, the fact that they would have to go on EMS calls as well?
Uh, some cities, believe it or not, this meeting discussed where some do only traffic calls, or, you know, the medical, and some do fire, though they split it. Uh, they said that's not the big deterrent. The biggest deterrent is the training. And the manpower and the loss of time away from a job, because of the short staff, so businesses don't want their employees leaving. So their hardest time is finding people to, that are allowed to go during, do calls, and then all the training that's required to do it. There's, I don't know how many hundreds of hours of training they have to have, and then keep up, just to, and it's, it's become, and it's a big expense for every fire department to pay for that training.
It would behoove us to try to find high schoolers at that senior year that would like to participate, because they're eighteen. When they're eighteen, twenty years in, you're thirty-eight, and you've got twenty years in the fire department. That's a good pension.
What Pine Island did is they started an explorer program, and they go to the school and start getting them interested when they're like sixteen, and they can do some of the stuff and do ride along and get. So then when they hit eighteen, whether, then they, they can jump into it if they want to. And they're working with the local colleges too, to see if they can, so they started doing that, and they, they've actually increased their staff, and they've actually brought down the age level, because everybody's starting to age out, and then they said when they're getting older, it's getting harder to do the job too.
Uh, included in your packet, I've also got a memo from, uh, Bryce Lang over in Dodge Center that's indicated they are no longer, no longer going to use the ambulance building here in Casson. So just a notification that their, uh, their lease will end there. They weren't paying anything on the lease anyway, so no financial loss for the city. Uh, the fire chief and I will be looking at that building to see if it does need remediation, or if, if, uh, we should be looking at demolition in the next couple of years, so. Okay. Any questions?
All right, thank you. Anything from our engineer?
Just a quick update on the fifty-sevens, like they're going to be paving the last section of the roadway, uh, towards the end of next week's schedule, so. Trying to wrap that up here before November.
The eleventh, the seventh to eleventh, they're paving?
Correct, end of next week, so I think concrete's coming like Monday, Tuesday, so.
Are they going to do the base layer for that and then do all the stuff at once, or?
Likely, yeah.
For the whole stretch from first to eleventh?
It'll be paved all out at the end of the year.
And then striped and?
Yep.
I had some, a couple of residents asking me about the sod. They're concerned that it may not take, because it's so late in the cycle.
Yeah, it's usually not a problem. A million times, usually when they can't cut it in the field, it's pros and pros, and so.
Okay.
It's a warranty item and repros projects, so.
Okay. But it.
Thank you. Personnel, we've got the retirement of Dan Trapp.
So we'd be looking for a motion to accept Dan's retirement.
I'll make that motion to accept the retirement of Dan Trapp with thanks for his years of service. No, I will second that. The motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Anything from our attorney?
For me.
All right, thank you. Correspondents, anything on the correspondents to highlight?
Um, just wanted to highlight that levy resolution, um, a little different format. Nancy worked out, um, the state law changed this year, so she did have a little more extra work to putting that together. So thanks to her for getting that done.
Thanks, Nancy. Anything else?
Thank the fire department for showing up to your school. They went to the elementary school and presented all the students, so it was nice to see.
All right, it's a short meeting, but seeing that we've completed the agenda, I will go ahead and adjourn the meeting.
All right.
Thank you.
Make a motion on that, question mark?
I think we're okay.